I'd like to call the Tuesday, February 4th, 2025 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Fanslaw, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
The current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in back of the council chambers. Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who attended last week's Coffee with the Cop at the Landing. It was hosted by the 55-plus club and the Police Department, but also had assistance from the Recreation Department. And the community 360 provided the coffee. It was one of our highest-attended Coffee with the Cop events. And it was great to see our entire community come together, and I look forward to doing more of those in the future. Thank you Tracy and her team. And then keeping with the Police Department, I want to congratulate all the Police Department employees who were recognized on Sunday, January 26th, during the Police Department's 10th Annual Award Ceremony. In total, 17 police officers were recognized for their accomplishments from this past year, varying from different condom, excuse me, different life-saving awards and different things. And the highest-ranking administrative award is the Police Star, which was awarded to Brandon Stiggy for his incredible work on the FBI Cyber Crimes Task Force. And the Officer of the Year was awarded to Alex Gress for several different things that he did throughout the year. And again, congratulations to everyone. We are fortunate to have highly-trained professionals protecting us every day. And then just a couple more things. It's hard to believe, but planning for this summer's Papillion Days has already started with the Community Foundation. They're taking the lead. But as always, every year where the city is part of those, those, um, planning committees. And we look forward to another great event this year. And connected with that, you'll notice on tonight's consent agenda is the request to execute a construction manager at-risk process for the City Park Renovation Project. The project is currently in the design phase with Confluence. Um, but as the design is wrapping up, we're looking forward to moving forward with the next phases of the project. And as you recall, it was budgeted in this year's budget. And the current timeline is to begin that, that project immediately after Papillion Days. So essentially time it that when we wrap up Papillion Days, we start the, the construction of this project. So there won't be disruptions to Papillion Days this year. However, Tracy and her team is working out a, a different location for our farmer's market. Since there will be disruptions to that this year, we're, we're nailing down, um, final options for that. And then we'll present those so everybody's aware of where that will be. And then finally, just a reminder that City Hall and City Offices will be closed on Monday, February 17th, in observation of President's Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Sunday. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Six eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Next item D1, Ordinance 2047. An ordinance to amend Chapter 1, Article 3 of the Papillion Municipal Code to create a criminal violation for failure to appear. Is there a councilman willing to introduce? Introduced by Councilman Gaines. E1, Ordinance 2046, an ordinance to amend Section 190-5 of the Papillion Municipal Code to allow for vehicle enforcement in parks and trails. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. F1, Resolution R250022, public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a Class C liquor license for Gugu Ramen LLC, doing business as Gugu Ramen, 9820 South 71st Plaza, Suite 101, and a manager application for Yan B. Yi. It's a public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Is the applicant here or representative of the applicant? Okay. Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R250022? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Fanslow. Any discussion? Please vote.
Five a's, one nay by Sunday.
Motion passes. Next is item F2. A resolution to approve applications for the 2025 Summer Fireworks Season, June 25th to July 4th. If there's no opposition, we'll take them all as one big group as the resolution's written. Uh, but if there is any objection, we can handle them one at a time. And just for the record, so people are aware, I'll read through who they are. Bear with me one second. Bellino Fireworks, uh, they've held a license for 28 years. Standard, Standard Fireworks, 28 years. Shepherd Fireworks, 28 years. Sarpy County Swim Club, 25 years. Echo Softball, 25 years. Tangier Shrine Center, 23 years. Papillion La Vista Optimist Club, 22 years. Papillion La Vista Spirit Football, 19 years. American Legion Post, 32, 19 years. Wellspring Church, eight years. Fraternal Order of Eagles, four years. First Lutheran Church, four years. And Papillion La Vista South Baseball Club, four years, and Titan Band Boosters for four years. If there's no objection, we can handle them all one at a time. Um, is there a motion to approve Resolution R250024? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Ingberg. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Six eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. F3, Resolution R250025. A resolution to approve a license agreement with Harry Bossard, American Legion Post 32, regarding the Legion's proposed temporary and limited use of an adjacent small parcel of City Park property. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R250025? Motion by Councilman Sunday. Second by Councilman Fanslow. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Six eight zero nays.
Motion passes. We have a couple of development items that each have a number of items. Um, the first one, uh, the next four are related items with Granite Falls. F4, Ordinance 2038. An ordinance to approve a change of zone from R2, single-family residential medium-density to R4, PUD multifamily residential with a specific planned unit development overlay for the property legally described as a replating of lots 180 to 289 and outlots L through P and S. Granite Falls North, generally located on the southeast corner, South 114th Street and Cornhusker Road. The applicant's Richland Homes, Granite Falls North, replat 1. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2038? Motion by Councilman Fanslow. Second by Councilman Glover. Any discussion? Please vote. Mr. Sunday.
Five a's, one nay by Sunday.
Motion passes. Item F5, Resolution R250026. A resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as a replating of lots 180 to 289 and outlots L through P and S, Granite Falls North. Generally located on the southeast corner, South 114th and Cornhusker Road. The applicant's Richland Homes. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R250026? Motion by Councilman Fanslow. Second by Mr. Mumgarth. Any proponents? Any? Welcome.
Thank you. Evening. Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100 in Omaha, Nebraska. Here on behalf of the applicant. Here presenting Granite Falls North. Um, while the others are administrative function, the PUD is in front of you today that goes along with the change of zone and the final plat that you'll be, uh, voting on as well. This is, uh, Phase 4 of a four-phase project. This project's been around quite some time. BHI Jerry Torzahn's project. I think we're all familiar with, with the product level and the level of development that he brings, uh, to the city of Papillion. Uh, and I apologize for this not being in color. We've had some illness in the office, as I'm sure everybody else has. But, um, we've been working quite a bit with staff, uh, on this, on this project and getting this PUD put together, brought in forward before you. Um, a couple of things that were requested, making sure that we have got some green space connectivity. It's part of the PUD process, having some amenity as part of that. And then get a diversification of units, uh, within this PUD. So the outer, uh, area of this project, uh, is some attached single-family. There will be 32 of those units, and then everything else inside here would be single-family, uh, villa-type product. Uh, they'll all be around that $400,000 to $500,000 range. So you're looking at 200 to 250 a side, um, uh, on the attached single-family. Depending on obviously how they, uh, decide to go with finishes. Your amendment, or your amenity here is a trail system along with, um, with, uh, basically workout stations, connectivity all the way through the subdivision. This does meet your comp plan, meets your zoning regulations, meets the subdivision, is in character within the Granite Falls North overall project. This was approved at Planning Commission on January 31st in 2024. And so we're here asking you for your approval here on this PUD to go along with the plat and change the zone. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sunday.
Mr. Thielen, I've got a question or two. Um, you're asking for setback adjustments to reduce the required-
Side yard.
Side yard setbacks. What is the need for that? I, I, my understanding is that we only do that when there's some exceptional circumstance. And one of those, as I understood it, was it was going to be providing affordable housing, hopefully by putting in more houses. But you just said that the entry-level price will be $400,000 to $450,000, I think I heard you say?
Correct.
Is that what you said? So, uh, I, I don't see that we're getting that price reduction that we were hoping for.
The current market for single-family housing right now is about $400,000. That's about as cheap as you can get.
So you're, you're charging market, and yet you want the setbacks?
Well, if you add five more feet, then you'll just add more to the price of the home.
Well, maybe.
No, it's a fact. More width along the street makes that street less, uh, more expensive to build. You defray the, uh, infrastructure across less units, which drives the cost up of the, the lots, therefore driving the cost of the units.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay, now you've got me somewhat confused. What are you telling us the, the typical price for new housing is now?
For these size of lots in the market currently for, for a newer home is going to be around $400,000.
Okay, that's with or without the, the five-foot setback?
Well, outside of Papillion, with five-foot side yards. So all the other side, all the other, uh, cities in Sarpy, as well as Omaha, that allow five-foot side yards by right within their permitted zoning uses and uses, that's the price point.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of looking at, well, what are you gaining in the price if we go from a 10-foot to a five-foot?
I'm gaining more lots.
Okay, but they're not lowering the price of the house.
They're, that's how they get to the price of the house. More lots.
Yeah.
More lots, more lots. You defray the infrastructure across, across this, uh, this project. That's, I mean, it's the math.
I sit here and I think, well, we're not really achieving anything by going to a five-foot set yard, setback if the say, if the people who we want to buy, want to be able to buy and come into Papillion, still can't come into Papillion because you haven't lowered the price of the house.
That is the starting price for brand-new construction in the market today. So whether they go here, or Gretna, or Omaha, they're paying that price. That's the market. That's the, that's, that's the competitive advantage is that they're matching the market. So instead of them maybe going to Gretna, they want to live in Papillion, they can come and get the same value of the house they would get in, say, Gretna. So I would argue that you are giving them a choice to come to your community at the price point that's all over the city, in the metro, versus them being higher and then choosing somewhere else to go.
Mr. Fanslow.
Jason, I have a question.
Yep.
So I get more lots, spread the cost of the infrastructure among more lots. Do you have an idea, and maybe you don't, on what the house, the price, the price of the house would be if we went with our standard 10-foot? I know I'm maybe putting you on the spot, but-
So the typical, you know, and I, I, you know, this project's been around a long time, but you can take a factor of five to whatever your lot prices are, and that's essentially where you end up in the market. So a $50,000 lot, which we can't bring online anymore, uh, would be about a $250,000 house, right? Um, so if, in the current market today, if those lots are $70,000 to $80,000 a lot, because they're a little bit wider, you're talking, you know, you're talking to be well over, you know, or 90,000, you're, you're pushing probably closer to 500, $450,000, $500,000, essentially. It's, and so it's probably a difference of, you know, 25 to 50 grand, potentially. Just because of the, you gotta, you gotta take the cost. I mean, the way we do development, right? And with an SID, and that becomes special assessments. Those special assessments are lower, therefore lowering the price of the lot. If you defray those costs over less lots, those lots cost more and therefore, uh, they charge more. That's just how it works.
All right. I think I'm still in the queue. Can you, um, tell everybody who's listening that there's, there's a factor, right? Every, for every X amount of house, price-wise, it excludes how many people? Do you have that?
Well, so, so for every $25 in your, in your payment, uh, and I, and, and this was, this was an old Hearthstone, uh, rule, but on the affordability side, and, um, and affordability is obviously a definition we all go back and forth on. But for every $25 of increase a month per payment, you'll knock out 100 families of being able to afford the house. And that's been pretty consistent across the board. Um, the goal obviously is to get down to, uh, you know, a price point back where we were, say, 20 years ago. I just do not know, bricks and sticks alone, you can't get down there. And so unfortunately for our market, where we're at today, that is the cost of a newly, new, uh, constructed home on a single-family lot. Even Celebrity, D.R. Horton, they're all closing between that 4 and 430 every, uh, all year last year. And we will exceed on the custom side. We will be almost $550,000 on average. I haven't seen the numbers yet, on average, for newly-constructed homes on the custom side. Yep.
Other council discussion? Mr. Gaines.
So Travis, I have a question for you. Um, can you give a little bit of history about the 10-foot setbacks? Because, you know, I've always had a policy that if it was a, a maintenance-free community or something like that, I would approve it. But what would we have to do to cha- I mean, it, it appears that more and more developers are coming to us asking for exceptions in the setback. So can you give a little history of, of our setback rules?
Yeah, I try to do my best. I mean, we've, the 10-foot setback has been a kind of a Papillion standard from the get-go. And when we've had the PUD requests come in over, especially over the past five to 10 years, yes, you're right, they are asking for that setback waiver, especially for a side yard setback from the 10 to 5. And that is so they can get a smaller lot size in order to defray that cost. And from an administrative standpoint, we've asked developers, when they ask for a PUD, what is the offset that you're doing? If you're, if you're a-asking for that setback waiver, what are the amenities that you're going to get for the development? Are you going to have a HOA that's going to provide maintenance-free living? Are you going to provide more green space, trails, uh, park amenities with that as well? And that was kind of the go-to standard for many years as well. Then, at this point, when we've been talking about affordable housing and we, we have the Affordable Housing Action Plan, uh, we're following up with other housing and trying to encourage, how do we encourage a price point that is, is more manageable? And we've been working with the development community. Um, it is about revi- providing housing diversity as well. So one of the things that we've been asking for with the PUDs that we've seen recently is can we get a different product type than just a single-family home? Can we get a duplex? Can we get a housing, single-family attached? Like in this instance where they've, they've provided that as well. Or you'll see in another project coming up, there's townhomes now that are included as well. Following all of this, bat, last fall, or last summer, we approved an amendment to the PUD as well, the language. So we've quantified the PUD language and our zoning code to, to include higher standards as well. So projects coming forward now with the PUD, if they're requesting a waiver, they're going to have to provide the information that we've been requesting for many years now. We're going to want that, the minimum green space requirements. We're going to want high-quality park system, trails, connections. And also, we're going to be asking for, uh, building elevations and designs to provide that unique look to the community. But those are things that we've been building for, for probably the last four or five years. So this project did precede the PUD amendment. It was already in-house and, and in review. But we did work with the applicant. That's why it's been in about a year. We've been working with the applicant on what concessions could we get from the developer? And this was where we, we were able to sprinkle in some of the PUD amendment on building elevations and also on housing design and, and typology. So.
And correct me if I'm wrong, the 10-feet goes all the way back before you guys had your own fire department. And that has never been changed.
Mr. Sunday.
If I could call Chief Gottsop for a moment. Hi, Chief. I know you're, uh, living in Papillion, uh, and have for several years, correct?
Yes, sir.
And, um, historically Papillion has had the, at least a 10-foot setback between single-family homes. And that's part of what has made Papillion such a nice community. Um, when I looked at these homes that are stacked right on top of each other, the first thing I think is, man, if there's a fire, it looks like it might spread real quickly from home to home. Could you speak to that? If I'm wrong on that, or?
No, depending on the type of fire service that you have in place. So when you look at these setbacks, you're creating time. So back when those setbacks, I believe, were established, and I'm not familiar with the dates, it was because we had a volunteer fire department. And so you're giving us greater time. So you don't have communication to other structures that are in close proximity. With a professional department, with response times that we try to stay under the national averages, that helps us so that communication isn't the concern. We're able to contain it to the structure of origin, room of origin, limiting damage. That answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Any others?
Well, how about in the instance of a real windy day? We have those in Nebraska, God knows, right?
Well, and, and you can also take into consideration too, building materials that we look at that tries to cr- to limit communication within those particular instances as well. So when you look at some of the more fire-durable sightings and things like that, you're, again, creating that time so it's not communicating as quickly as maybe, uh, residents that have older wood-type sightings that could ignite a little bit quicker. So the combination of building materials, good department, good services, good response time plays into allowing us to be a little probably, I'm not the planning director, but, uh, it, it does allow us to be a little bit more liberal with some of the spacing that we can then do between different structures. So wind, we try to account for that. But, uh, like you say, you get in a windy day, it just depends on what the fuel load is, how far ahead it's gotten, who's discovered the fire. I mean, there's some other things that can play into that where you might have it communicate to another structure. But, uh, like I said, we, we put a lot of confidence in the building materials and our response times to get there quickly.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll go along with what both of them have said a little bit. Yes, I've been, I've been around a long time here too, and that was my understanding of the, Mr. Ingberg might agree or disagree with this. One of my understandings as to why they went with the 10-foot setback was because it was a volunteer fire department, uh, city. And it was mostly a safety act, a safety factor. Um, I find that very logical. We no longer need that. We've moved on to a fire department with greater expertise, et cetera. And so that theory doesn't really, that, that purpose doesn't really come into play. But then over the years, the 10-foot setback has given Papillion a look that, and a style, and a, and a lifestyle that is different than other places. And so we've div- that 10-foot setback has created a, you know, a feel in Papillion that you don't find elsewhere. Unfortunately, it also drives the price of the house up. And so you have to have more money to live in Papillion. That's the tough thing for me, is to, well, we're, I, I like the, I like the, the feel. I like the image. But if that means, well, you have to be rich to live in Papillion, then I'm not sure I like that. Uh, so I ca- I'm thinking, well, yes, perhaps it is time that we not overall change the 10-foot, but we go to some places at the 5-foot because it's just a necessity to be able to have people come to Papillion. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to apologize. I got delayed where I was and just couldn't do any better and didn't break any speed limits getting here. Change is hard. Change is super hard. And a few of us have been around a couple decades in this city and even on this city council, and have had a great opportunity to see change in this community. And whether that change has been bringing in malls that we've never had before, or allowing a few new apartment complexes. Look at the schools we've put up in the last couple decades. That's all been change. But you know what hasn't changed? The feel of Papillion. Papillion's still Papillion because of the people. The people who desire to be here are what make Papillion. It's not whether we're driving those dirt roads or if we're putting houses with five-year, five-foot setbacks. It has to do with the culture that we have here, with the morals and values that we have here. Do I want to purchase a house with a 10-foot setback? I guess I'll talk it over with my husband, but that's a choice I get to make, that he and I will make. So we've talked in great detail, whether in council meetings, at some of our city planning meetings that we've had, about how do we keep Papillion going? Well, some of it's about the diversity, giving lots of people the opportunity to be here. It's not the people who are the doctors and the lawyers that are working at our retail stores, who are offering to volunteer or work at our community landing. We need this variety. And it is one way that we can attempt to save somebody $20, $50,000 on a house. We're never going back to those prices when I bought my house 20 years ago, 27 years ago. But we have to do everything we can because the economy's going to keep changing. And what we're paying for goods is going to keep changing. We challenge our developers to do something to help us bring people in that want to live here in Papillion. And then we look at these developers and we go, oh, wait a minute. And we're virtually making it impossible. I'd love to have a community where there's multiple different items. I trust our fire department can get there. They've got better equipment. They've got the know-how, and we've got the communication. 10-foot setbacks, 5-foot setbacks, condos, apartments, they're what makes a community great. And I think that as hard as it is to let that image go of the Papillion of a decade or two ago, to let it go and say, we're ready for the next phase of Papillion, I just feel like we're there. And I, for one, am going to say, yes, 5-foot setbacks are just fine. It lets us have, uh, more diversity in our housing options.
Mr. Sunday.
The aesthetics of a community are very important. And I'm not discounting what you said about the good people of Papillion. But Papillion's also a beautiful city, and I'd like to keep it that way. I'm not opposed to a setback exception if I'm provided a good reason. I haven't heard that reason tonight. Just that the developer's going to make some more money. It's what I've heard, or what I've discerned from what he said. The price point that we were quoted is not going to help, uh, the people that we want to help come into our community. You talked about diversity. We're talking about a $400,000 entry point. I don't think that's promoting a whole lot of diversity. So I don't think we're achieving the goal that we say we're trying to achieve, and yet we're harming the aesthetics of our community permanently. So I'm voting no.
I do want to, we got a number of people in the queue, but I do want to respect that we're still in the public hearing and then council discussion will come up. So if it, if it, I know, and that, and I can, and I let it keep going, and I just- So if it, if it, I know, and that, and I can, and I let it keep going and I just realized it. So, oh, no, we're in proponents and opponents, never mind. We'll jump to, I'm going to jump real quick though. Are there any other proponents or opponents? Council discussion, go ahead, Mr., I think Mr. Glover was next. Well, Mr. Sunday, were you done?
I am.
Mr. Glover.
So what, of the square, the houses that are going to sit on the five-foot setback, the, the four-hundred-thousand-dollar house, what is the square footage that you anticipate that house would be?
Um, I don't know, I didn't give me the square footages. So for example, on the Villas, this is a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, crassman up top here, I'm showing you. So, you know, this is a, a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, two stories. So my guess is you're probably looking, you know, a few thousand square feet. I'm not entirely sure how, what the square footage is of the house, of the houses are, because he didn't provide those to me.
You think it's close, close to the two thousand?
For three bedrooms and a two-story, I mean, to get, to get that under two thousand square feet, I think it's going to be a little difficult. Have a decent kitchen and, 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 you know, whatever, maybe have a den or something into it. But, you know, eighteen-hundred to twenty, two-hundred square feet probably. You know, they're, 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 they're nice-looking homes. Everybody knows what Jerry Torzan builds. You know, there's, they're nice fronts, he's got a different variety of fronts. But, you know, we are challenged as a building, community, development community to bring affordability. And quite frankly, if you continue down the road of, of ten-yard setbacks, you're, you're going to have nothing but five and six-hundred-thousand-dollar houses because they're going to have to jump up. You cannot put a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house on a sixty-foot lot, it just doesn't work. And so it becomes a numbers game. And no, no one's going to spend that kind of money for a sixty-foot lot with ten-foot side yards, a forty-foot buildable. It's really, really difficult.
Mr. Glover.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Engberg.
I'd like to think I've spent an awful lot of time studying mental, missing housing and a lot of architecture and things because that happens to be an interest of mine. You know, we sit here, we talk about five-foot, ten-foot setbacks. And like Mr. Sunday said it best, what he said, it, it's also appearance. Now, we, we have a committee that we have right now that is looking at supposedly affordable housing. I was on, on that committee, I think I've just been rotated to a different one. But nevertheless, I guess I'm kind of missing the point somewhere because what I'm looking for is some variety in housing that's unique and is creative. And you can still halfway afford it. Five-foot setbacks doesn't give me that house that I'm looking for. It doesn't give me that house that has an unusual look. Or perhaps fills a, a, a need in the community that we can't fill right now. If somebody makes the relative table, we hear about duplexes and triplexes and things like that. I don't have a problem with, with changing the side yard requirements based on what the development is. Because this gentleman, Jerry Torzan or whatever, may come with a plan to do a development that provides some housing that we just can't provide. And in order to make it work, it needs to be changed as far as the setbacks. But I don't believe in changing the setbacks just because somebody comes in and says, aren't these pretty houses? And we're really creative here. Well, I'm not seeing it. I'm not seeing houses that, we're not going to go back to two-hundred-thousand-dollar houses, I'm not naive. But on the other hand, you don't see lofts, you don't see other things that maybe are affordable to people. So just to change the setback from ten to five, just because, I can't vote for. You come with a product to me that says, if you allow me to cut those lot sizes down or the setbacks down to five, okay, I'll, I'll listen to you and I'll think about it. But the way this sits, I'm not going to change the setback.
Mr. Gaines.
So I've been very consistent on the ten-foot setback issue. And when the issues come before us, it, it always makes me wonder why we have our standards in place if we're not going to follow them. And if this council wants to change the standards, then I guess that's a different discussion for a different day. I agree with, you know, what Mr. Engberg and Mr. Sunday said about appearance. It, it's something that separates us. And, and just being a hundred percent honest, anytime anybody uses, you know, this is what everybody else does, it, it's not a good argument because we, at least myself, I feel like this place is special. I feel like our standards are special. I, I, you know, I don't know why necessarily we're talking about affordable housing because a four-hundred to six-hundred-thousand-dollar house doesn't seem to be that affordable to me. But, you know, if, it, it just comes down to, if we continuously change from five-foot to ten-foot, then why don't we change what our rules are? Because if we continuously do that, we don't ever have a choice to go back. We don't have a choice to select A, B, and C for five-foot setbacks and then just for whatever reason, we don't approve builder D. This is, this will become precedent, it'll become a standard. And quite frankly, I guess my theory is if you can afford four-hundred-thousand dollars for a house, you can afford four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars for a house.
You can't though.
So, well, I, I get in, in reality.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gaines is speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry, apologize.
So, I mean, I'm just going to be with, consistent with where I've been the whole time. If the issue comes up in front of the council, but I'm going to vote no on this, just like I have. I believe every other time it's come up that it hasn't been a special project, so.
Any, any other council discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Three yays, four nays by Sunday, Gaines, Glover, and Engberg.
Motion fails. So I guess I've got a question then on F-six and F-seven since they're related items, Mr. Gibbons.
That was the final plat, there's an Eighth Amendment and there is a PUD agreement. So from a procedural perspective, Ms. Hutter? That's correct. There were. F-four was the approval of, from R-four to R-four PUD.
Okay, so twenty-three eight passed.
That's correct.
Well, they're, as they're on the agenda, it's, it's, as they're on the agenda, it's proper to call them up so that they may be disposed of. But if they're, as they're dependent on, as they're dependent on passage of resolution twenty-five zero zero two six.
So if there's a dependency, is there be appropriate to do a table, a motion to table?
I, well, you could, you could, in this instance, you could do either a motion to table or a motion to postpone indefinitely.
What would be most appropriate? Look to you and Mr. Gibbons.
And if, if I may, I think it, it depends on whether we do a motion to table or a motion to postpone indefinitely. It, it depends on forward-looking what the planning department believes the next steps would be for this project.
It was going to, a lot of it's going to be up to the applicant as well. With the, with the final plat being voted down, I need to look at the code as to, there generally is a time limit for when the applicant can reapply for a final plat if it's been denied. So if you could give me just one second, I can look that up.
I believe we can, we can request a reconsideration for a layover.
So if the applicant is wishing to redo the plat, they would have to come back with a substantially different plat for, for the final plat. So it would probably be better to lay it over indefinitely at this situation. That way they could go back, revise if they need, if they, if they so choose and then we would just recondition those conditions.
So I, I apologize, I think I forgot my mic earlier. I think Ms. Power saved me there. So then what I would recommend is from a council member to get a, a motion to postpone indefinitely.
So moved.
Can we handle, can we handle both F-six and F-seven in the same motion? Or just handle them separate?
I would handle them separately, just for clarity.
Motion by Councilman Sunday to indefinitely postpone?
F-five, yes.
F, uh, F-six.
Excuse me, F-six.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Is there a second? A second by Mr. Mungard. Council discussion, Mr. Sunday.
Oh, sorry.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Six yays, one nay by Fanslaw.
Motion passes, item F-seven.
I'm sorry, yes, but also Mayor, may we go back on twenty-five zero zero two seven just to ensure that we have a, a clear record? I may have misheard how you.
Yes, so. So F-six was resolution R-twenty-five zero zero two seven, a resolution to approve the Eighth Amendment to the Granite Falls North subdivision agreement. And Mr. Sunday made a motion to indefinitely postpone and it was seconded by Mr. Mungard. Correct. So then F-seven was resolution R-twenty-five zero zero two eight. It was a pub, it is a public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve the Granite Falls North Replat One Planned Unit Development Agreement. Because it was a published public hearing, should we open it?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. Anything else to add in the public hearing on that item? Yeah, I would argue the outside, the attached single-family products are two-hundred thousand aside for a total of four-hundred. So you actually do get thirty-six units right around the two-hundred thousand mark. So the other item on your action, your Affordable Action Plan, it's going to be really hard to, to, to bring affordable product to this city if we're going to have uncertainty when we're this far down the road with the project. You've sent that message to the market as saying, hey, look, if we don't have all these things, the more you add to this, these projects for character and all those things, it just jumps the price up. So I would caution, the amount of things you want developers to bring within their projects that get to an affordability product when they're bricks and sticks, based on the units that we have, we can't get to a price point we'd like to. Adding all of the extra things just drives that cost up. And so just think through that a little bit as you're going through this Affordable Action Plan and saying that you want affordable housing. And then I get to this point and I can't get passed. So it's a, it's a message. That'll take back to my client.
Any other proponents or opponents? I'll close the public hearing. I think the message from our council to developers is if you want to get an exception to the setback rule, you need to be, bring something substantive to the table other than your desire. That, that's all I'd have to say on that.
And did we have the motion to indefinitely postpone? Mr. Gaines, you made that, correct? Is there a second? Mr. Glover? Any other discussion? Mr. Fanslaw.
I have a question for Travis. Travis, I'm not going to read, reread the planning commission or staff report. But can you talk to how this proposed project that doesn't appear to be able to be approved, how it fits the master plan and how it conforms to the zoning code that the council passed? And can you refresh everybody when we pass those codes? Thank you.
If I, just clarify, you're asking how it conforms to our comprehensive plan and, and our.
And, and the zoning code?
Yes.
That's on the books, yes.
Point of order? Point of order. Didn't you, aren't we talking about the motion to postpone indefinitely?
On the planned unit development agreement.
Isn't germane to that. So I'm, I guess I would, would object to the discussion unless we're going to discuss the motion.
I would like Ms. Hutter to clarify, but the motion to postpone indefinitely is related to the planned unit development agreement. So I think the clarification on planned unit agreement would help inform the vote on the motion to.
When the motion to postpone is on the table, the discussion should be centered on the motion to postpone and whether you're in favor of that or not. Not whether you're in favor of the overall.
Uh, under.
Can you make a ruling?
Yes. Under strict Roberts rules, a motion to postpone indefinitely, it is debatable and the debate can go to the merits of the main question.
Okay. Thank you for raising that because we're learning. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Fanslaw or Mr. Gibbons.
So as the, as the planned unit development, how it pertains, our comprehensive plan mentions over and over within our housing element, within our land use element, to provide not just affordable housing, but diversity of housing types to the product. It, it, it really speaks to that volumes. But the development is also asked, there, there are setbacks. The only setback waiver that they did request here was the side yard setback. The front yard, rear yard and side yard setbacks remain the same as a standard R-four zoning development that we would have in Papillion. Then again, as, as I stated earlier, the five-yard foot setback request was so that they could get a smaller lot size. They could get a fifty-five to a fifty-foot lot for the, for the particular product that was here. And as it relates to the PUD as well, as part of the PUD is, is also about recreation. And it's about the amenities that are provided for the loss of that yard space. We didn't see the loss of the yard space in the rear yards or in the front yards. They have the linear trail system through the, through the outlots with, they've got exercise stations. And also again, as the developer just stated, they are providing thirty-six additional types of housing units on the perimeter of the property, which are those single-family attached units, which all of this was in general conformance with our conference plan and the Affordable Housing Action Plan.
Any other discussion? If not, please vote on the motion to indefinitely postpone.
Six yays, one nay by Fanslaw.
Motion passes, next is item F-eight. The next five items are all related. Ordinance two thousand forty-two, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agriculture to R-four multifamily residential. And R-four PUD-two multifamily residential with specific planned unit development overlay for the property legally described as attractive land located in part of the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter along with the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter excluding any right-of-way dedication for South Seventy-Second Street, Stony Point Drive and Ponderosa Drive, all located in Section One Township Thirteen North, Range Twelve East of the six PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located southeast of Seventy-Second Street and Shram Road, the applicant's Ponderosa Seventy-two Development LLC. Is there a motion to approve ordinance two thousand forty-two? Which by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Mungard. Discussion. Please vote.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Motion passes, related. Motion passes, related F nine, Resolution R twenty-five zero zero two nine. A resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in part of the southwest quarter, northwest quarter along with the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter excluding any right-of-way dedication for South Seventy-Second Street, Stony Point Drive and Ponderosa Drive, all located in section one township thirteen north range twelve east, six PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located southeast Seventy-Second Street and Shram Road, applicant's Ponderosa seventy-two Development. Motion to approve Resolution R twenty-five zero zero two nine? Motion by Councilman Clu. Second by Councilman, I missed it. Sunday, thank you. Any proponents or opponents? Welcome.
Jason Thiel and E and A Consulting Group, ten oh nine Mill Valley Road, Suite one hundred here in Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one five four here on behalf of the developer. I'll take the final plat and the PUD, uh, as well, just and carry my comments forward. So this is Ponderosa Place. Uh, this is a two-phase project. Uh, just for some bearings, Shadow Lake Town Center, we have three seventy, Seventy-Second Place. This is Seventy-two Place. Um, and this was technically going to be a second phase of Seventy-two Place. They've decided to rebrand that. Seventy-second all the way down to Cape Heart. This is where the future school, um, Papillion School, uh, schools have purchased property. And, um, will eventually at some point, uh, go forward with schools there, I think of the total campus. This is the overall projects, is an eighty acre project. The blue line is the phase line. Three sets of prof, uh, four sets of product in this project, so much more on Mr. Edberg's hope that we have some missing middle items as well as we've got, uh, different types of product and different price points, uh, here. And so we've got apartments here up front, about three hundred and twenty units of those apartments. Seventy-second place, or Seventy-Second Streets, a four-lane, uh, divided arterial road, very loud. This is a very classic transition from that type of, uh, environment into a less dense as you go east type, uh, project. We have a hundred and forty-five row houses. Uh, so the, the rents here will be market rate rent. It's consistent with what's in Papillion. There's one and two and three bedrooms. I do not know if they know their mix yet. The row houses here, a hundred and fourteen, five of those, those will range between two eighty-five and three oh five. That, uh, is the main reason for the PUD is there's, allows us to get the density we need, uh, to reach that price point. That is consistent throughout the Omaha metro. Uh, not a lot of this product for sale. This is a for-sale product. It is not a rental product. I'm aware this is the only, a group that is building besides D.R. Horton has a similar product. It's actually a little bit wider, uh, a little bit longer. But this is a for-sale product on fee simple lots, so something that, uh, does give them advantage for selling those. And then we've got attached single family lots, um, that we agreed to kind of adjust the fronts of those within the PUD to, to break up the streetscape as best we can, uh, with attached product, with garages up front. That can be a bit of a challenge. Developers agree to do that. Um, so there'll be some combination of the single story or what I call villa and then two-story product, uh, in this attached single family. And so in that first phase attached single family, there's fifty-four units there. They're somewhere, gonna be somewhere between three hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand aside. It is a new development, so just keep that in mind with the price point of land and infrastructure as well. Kind of that same conversation we had earlier on, on how the price point gets where it's at. There is connectivity through this neighborhood, um, towards the end of this, we'll come up amending the subdivision agreement of Seventy-two Place. Up top, we are bringing, uh, a trail. From Seventy-two Place, the commercial as well as those apartments and then there's some, they've got some cottage-type development that'll be rental, that'll be able to come down through our, this development through the rear, in between the attached single family and the townhouses. Will also act as a fire lane at the suggestion of, of staff to, so we could get more affordable units in this project. It looked, turned out to be pretty good. And then this will, we've worked with the, uh, with the school. They have actually paper dedicated this right-of-way or will as we go forward with this project. And then that trail will be picked up by them when they so for, so decide to go forward with their campus. And so we've really worked with a lot of the surrounding uses that we know are there, the developers of, of two of them. The amenities in this area, this will be a shared amenity between these two groups. There's a open green space for play. They've got a, uh, I'm not entirely sure if they've completely programmed this green space here. It'll be a playground, something for kids. This will be actually a ball field with a connecting trail through green space, not like a, like a baseball field, but just an open green space where you can go throw frisbee, throw football, uh, that won't be obstructed with things. And then they are working together on coming up with a way that these people here will be able to enjoy the pool they have and they'll design that pool accordingly. So it's really looking to be much more of a, kind of a mixed housing type development with four different product types, four, you know, some rental, four own plus, uh, certainly four, three different price points once we get into the single family homes there. This project's in conformance to your comp plan. It's in conformance to zoning subdivision regulations. It is in conformance with your affordable housing action plan as it's got the different types of products as well as the price point. It was approved at planning commission, uh, June twenty-eighth on the twenty-third, of twenty-three. And so we're asking for your approval of our final plat, PUD and change of zone, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Glover.
Affordable housing you talked about, what, what is the size of those houses? Square footage?
So those, the row houses are seven hundred, so it's a, it's a three-stack product. So it's garage under and then you have the living room up front, which is seven hundred square feet. And then you have three bedrooms and two baths. So you have a, your kitchen area, a living room area and a, and a full bath, or I'm sorry, half bath powder room. Then you have three bedrooms with a master on suite as well as a, uh, a bathroom. So it's twenty-one hundred total square feet, seven hundred feet on each level.
Mr. Mungard.
Let's see if I've got this straight. Going back to the, go back to the plat, that, the picture that had the whole thing.
This one.
Right, that one. Okay, so now we're talking about a housing area that is made up of apartments, row houses and townhomes.
Yep.
So all of those places will have a lower cost to somebody who wants to buy than, uh, four hundred thousand, right?
I would say that while the, the townhouse is cer, the row houses certainly will. They'll be two eighty-five, three hundred, maybe a little over three hundred thousand.
Right.
And that is the, currently in the marketplace, that is the cheapest, this is the new starter house.
Okay, yes. So, so now if we're talking about quote affordable housing, this is our affordable housing.
Well, yeah, I would argue it's, you know, affordable is, is relative, obviously, but yes, it's the cheapest thing you can, yeah, for sure.
This is housing that is lesser priced than a house.
Anything else?
Than a house with a ten-foot setback, so let's say, right? So if we're not gonna do ten-foot setbacks and we're not gonna reduce it, well, if we're gonna stay with ten-foot setbacks and we're not gonna reduce it to a five-foot setback, we'll only have the ten-foot's and these. And these have substantially less yard than a five-foot setback, right?
Substantially less and it's also a contained community, uh, which I forgot to mention.
Well, I, I like it.
It, so you, you pay a due, they mow, they move your snow, they water your grass, they pick up dog poop, they do all the things. It's a contained community for, for that group.
I like it. I'm glad that that, that variety, that diversity is going to be provided. I don't like the apartment buildings because it seems to me if you, if, if you're, if all that you have is five and six hundred thousand dollar houses and people wanna move in here, then we get to see a lot of apartment buildings and I don't.
Correct.
You know, I don't think that's the best option is it's either a five or six hundred thousand dollar house or it's a three-story apartment building. I'm not crazy about those two, that, that being the only options.
Typically what we built.
So I like what you're doing, but I do wanna point out that, well, okay, when we're discussing our options, if we don't do the five-foot setback, this is the only option left to get the price down.
Yeah, well, it's, it's density. I mean, so back to the, back to that conversation of how do we get price point down? So this, the density of the row houses are almost fourteen units an acre, um, which the attached single family, if you did the math, you're probably looking at maybe five to six, maybe. We currently don't get much more than two point seven and two point eight units per acre on single family housing anymore. Based on sizes, based on a lot of reasons why, things that are not in control of anybody's this room. But yeah, density cures some of the affordable ills. And that's this type of product that's gotta be able to start coming to the marketplace. And we have very few, um, people willing to risk, cause it's a risk and pioneers get the arrows in our, in our business. And so certainty of being able to bring a project forward and get it approved so that they can move forward and sell houses.
Well, your, your row houses and apartments are more density than I would prefer. But if the options are a ten-foot setback or this, that's, I guess we gotta go for it.
You can find plenty of single family housing in Papillion to buy.
Thank you, Mr. Fanslaw.
Ta, ta, I'll just add what Councilman Mungard's talking about. So I, I believe in a variety of housing for the people who want choices in the community that we're trying to build and that we, we manage. And I think the last project and I think this product here achieves that. And I'll also add that some people don't want to maintain a larger yard. As, as our population ages, it's a known fact that maintenance of property is harder and harder. So I, I think we have seen in, in this product and in the last project, um, product that obviously people want. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Any other proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, F ten, Resolution R twenty-five zero zero three zero, public hearing and a vote. Resolution to approve the Ponderosa Place subdivision agreements, public hearing. I'll open it, carry the com, comments over unless there's something new. Any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-five zero zero three zero? Motion by Councilman Fanslaw? Second by Councilman Clu. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, F eleven, Resolution R twenty-five zero zero three one, a public hearing and a vote. Resolution to approve the Ponderosa Place planned unit development agreement. It's public hearing. I'll open it. Any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-five zero zero three one? Motion by Councilman Gaines? Second by Councilman Glover. Any discussion? Or was it Mr. Sunday? Mr. Sunday, I'm sorry. My hearing aids aren't working. I gotta turn my hearing aids up. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, also related item F twelve, Resolution R twenty-five zero zero three two. A resolution to approve the Ponderosa Place sewer and water connection agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-five zero zero three two? Motion of Councilman Clu? Second by Councilman Fanslaw. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion. Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, F thirteen, Resolution R twenty-five zero zero three three, uh, public hearing and a vote. Well, this is related, no, this is a different, no, this is a related item. Resolution to approve the Third Amendment to the Seventy-two Place subdivision agreement. Public hearing. I'll open it.
Jason Thiel and E and A Consulting Group, ten ninety-nine Mill Valley Road, Suite one hundred, here on behalf of the applicant. This is what I was referring to, the amendment to subdivision agreement to allow us to bring a trail. It's a little, need a little more right-of-way. We'll dedicate through there for that trail and the easements that, that we, we can't. We'll add an easement to the lots that we need to, but I think we can get most right-of-way and that will carry that trail forward and that's what that amendment's for.
Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-five zero zero three three? Motion by Councilman Sunday? Second by Councilman Glover. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, F fourteen, Ordinance two thousand forty-three. An ordinance to approve a change of zone from LC Limited Commercial to CC Community Commercial for the property legally described as Lot one ninety Granite Creek East and Lot one Granite Creek, Granite Creek East replat one. Generally located on the northeast corner of South a hundred and second street and Highway three seventy. Applicant Gerald Torzan, Granite Creek East. Is there a motion to approve ordinance two thousand forty-three? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Mungard. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, F fifteen, Ordinance two thousand forty-five. An ordinance to approve a change of zone from R four multi-family residential to R four PUD two multi-family residential with a specific planned unit development overlay for the property legally described as a replating of Lot one Trinity Edition, Outlet A, Papillion Landing and Tax, Tax Lot twelve B, Section twenty-seven. Township fourteen north range twelve east of the six PM Sarpy County, generally located at five twenty West Lincoln Street. The applicants are manual retirement communities, Trinity repla, Trinity Edition replat one. Is there a motion to approve ordinance two thousand forty-five? Motion by Councilman Clu? Second by Councilman Sunday. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Related item, F sixteen, Resolution R twenty-five zero zero three five. A resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as a replating of Lot one Trinity Edition, Outlet A, Papillion Landing and Tax Lot twelve B, Section twenty-seven Township fourteen north. Range twelve east of the six PM Sarpy County, generally located at five twenty West Lincoln Street. The applicants are manual retirement communities. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-five zero zero three five? Motion by Councilman Sunday? Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? I'll note that the applicant is here. I don't know if you have anything to add. Welcome.
Caleb Ben Wieldon, Lampre Neersen, fourteen seven one ten West Sod Road, here on behalf of the applicant. And we've discussed this before, so I'm available to answer any more questions you may have.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much for being here. Any other proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, F seventeen, Resolution R twenty-five zero zero three six. A public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve the Trinity addition, Trinity Edition replat one planned unit development agreement. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-five zero zero three six? Motion by Councilman Gaines? Second by Councilman Fanslaw. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, all the regular agenda items, committee reports, I think Finance and Administration met. Mr. Ringberger, I understand you're the chair.
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Congratulations.
Not much to report tonight because, um, we're going to carry over the meeting. We met for our, uh, expected water sewer rate, uh, discussion and, uh, presentation about our water and sewer rates. We spent most of the meeting tonight discussing the water portion. We're gonna meet in a couple of weeks and go through the sewer portion. And hopefully by the end of that discussion, we'll have a recommendation to come back to the full council.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the floor? See none? Any council comments?
Just a couple of updates from the last couple of weeks. Most, uh, normal things, uh, wastewater agency met, nothing major occurred there. Legislature's in session, all the bills have been introduced, they're starting to schedule hearings. And so we're monitoring the, the committee hearings real close every week. And again, we're doing that through the United Cities, we're doing it through the League of Municipalities and we're doing it with our own staff actively monitoring. So again, if there is any bill that you specifically are interested in, let us know. And, um, we've, we've got a good mechanism to monitor those and know when they're going to another stage or when a committee hearing's coming up. So if you've got something specifically of interest, um, let us know and we'll track those. I wouldn't say there's anything of substance that's yet occurring, other than there was one development item that Mr. Sturzma went down and testified on. I think I sent you all a note on that one. That was probably the most substantial item. And other than that, um, we've been having some final design meetings on the City Park renovation. I think that's all staying true to the designs that, that you had all looked at, some minor tweaks as it's getting down to the, the buildable plans, but it's staying real true to that. So if you've got questions on how that's occurring, um, let Ms. Powers her, uh, know and she can update you on that. Other than that, just a couple of dates to keep in mind, if you haven't seen them, February twelfth at seven AM, the Downtown Business Association is hosting their first annual State of the City Forum. So sign up for that if you're interested. Uh, Valentine's Day on the fourteenth, it's been a tradition that the, uh, seniors have a Valentine's Day luncheon. Day luncheon with La Vista, and council members are invited to help serve lunch, if you want to do that, and then on the nineteenth, we have a ribbon cutting with Red Lotus Thai, local family-owned restaurant, and I'll just warn you, if you go there, don't start with the highest heat level, it's a one to five, I like hot, I did a three, and I will not go any higher, but that ribbon cutting is on the nineteenth at noon, and if my calendar and memory is right, this is the fifth anniversary of Ms. Powers being appointed as city administrator, so... Appreciate everything you do for us. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines, please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
We are adjourned.